This conference will now be recorded.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I believe he was going to be calling in.
Okay. I'll give Mr. Hornstein a couple of minutes and then I'll go ahead and start my present, my or, my introduction by the time I get through that, hopefully he will be signed in. While we're waiting, I think I will go ahead and confirm that the people that are here can hear and see. So I'm just gonna go through the list, admin, La Center organizer, I think it's Ms. Dollars, can you hear? Okay.
Yep.
Another admin, La Center organi-, there's two more, four more, there's four. Hi, Mr. Hornstein. Can you hear us? Sorry. Mr. Hornstein, are you able to see and hear us? See him, his mic's unmuted. There we go, Mr. Hornstein. His mic is unmuted on my end and. Mr. Hornstein, can you hear me? I can hear him. There we go, Mr. Hornstein, can you hear us?
I can now, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We could see you. I could hear you. Uh, right now, I'm just, let's see, I'll go ahead and start the hearing, this is the May 26, 2020 hearing for the city of La Center, my name is Joe Turner, I'm the city's hearings examiner. Just because this is an online hearing, I'm gonna make sure everybody's connected first, so. Um. I have four admin, La Center organizer. I'm assuming all the city staff can hear.
Yeah.
Emma Johnson, can you hear us and see us?
Yes.
Good. Um, Ms. Roden?
Yes, I can see and hear everybody.
Mr. Stoker?
Yes, I can see and hear.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson?
I can see and hear everybody.
Great. Mr. Spoon?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Goodwin, Godwin? Godwin, oh, your mic muted, that's okay, I see you. Uh.
There we go.
There, thank you, Mr. Goodman. Mr. Tanner?
Yes, I'm here, I can see and hear.
Mr. and Mrs. Gilbert, can you see, hear us and if you have video, see us?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, it looks like you're signed on by phone, so I assume you can't see us then. Mr. Rhodes, can you see and hear us?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. Um, local user, the person at the.
Chad McQuarrie from Wolfson Engineering, yes, I can see and hear.
Great, thank you, Ms. Rhodes?
Hi, yes, I can see and hear, thank you.
Thank you, and Mr. Deuce?
Yes, I can hear and see you.
Mr. Hornstein, we've done, and Mr. Sweeney? Mr. Dale Sweeney, can you hear us? We're not hearing you if you're connected. It says on my screen, audio PIN number not can entered, does he need to enter a PIN number?
Yes, um, I've sent that over to him, I hope that will fix it.
Okay. Mr. Roden, do we need to wait for Mr. Sweeney to get logged on, or should we go ahead and proceed with the introduction at least?
I think we can go ahead and proceed.
Okay. Um. So I'll ask staff to first mute all the microphones, just so we're not getting feedback and their noise. I'll un-, well unmute people as it's your opportunity to testify. Um. If you've muted your own microphone, you'll need to unmute yourself as well, like. But I will begin with some brief remarks, so everyone understands how they can participate in this online hearing. Um, I start by saying the, um, well, the hearing, this online hearing is reasonable and necessary at this time to comply with the state's social distancing order, maintain public health and safety. Online use applicant. Like, you're telling me things. Um, secondly, I am not, I say I'm not a city employee, I'm licensed as an attorney and trained as a planner. I serve under contract to the Board of Commissioners. I say that so you know you're getting a somewhat independent review of the application before me tonight. My role as the hearings examiner is to conduct public hearings and make decisions about certain land use matters in the city of La Center. In making those decisions, I am required to apply the city's existing laws. I am not a policymaker. I don't have the authority to vary from or change the laws. If you think that the laws need to be changed, you'll need to work with the city's, city council and planning commission to do that. But state law requires that I hope that I. Did, um. Decide this case based on the, the laws that existed when the application was filed. As a hearing examiner, I can provide an unbiased decision maker. I believe I am unbiased with regard to the application before me tonight. I have not had any pre-hearing contact with any of the parties regarding the substance of the application. And I don't have any interest in the subject property or any of the surrounding properties. But you have the right to challenge my impartiality, to argue that I'm biased in one way or another. And you can do that when it's your opportunity to testify. Procedure, I'll, I'll start with an overview of the hearing process generally, our standard hearing process. Then I'll attempt to address some of the technical issues with this online hearing. But procedure will follow, I will start by asking staff to summarize their staff report. Then the applicant will have an opportunity to present their proposal and respond to the staff report. Um, I have a list of persons who desire to testify. Um, other than the applicant and staff, the only person on that list is Mr. Hornstein. At the end of the hearing, if I will open it up, if anybody else has any questions or comments, to make sure we give everyone a chance to respond, to testify if they want to, based on what was presented at the hearing. Once everyone has had an initial opportunity to testify, I will give staff and the applicant an opportunity to respond to the testimony that was offered. If that response includes any new evidence, I will give everyone a chance to respond to the new evidence. Otherwise, I'll close the public portion of the hearing and announce what I'm gonna do. Um, there's no arbitrary limit to the length of time you can testify. The testimony should be relevant to the applicable approval criteria, which you set out in the staff report. Also, it's important that you make your best case to me, my decisions are, um. Although my decisions are subject to appeal to city council, city council generally will not allow new testimony and evidence on appeal. They'll decide any appeal based on the record before me. So if you feel it's important that myself or any future decision maker knows something about this application, you need to make sure it gets into the record before me. In order to preserve your right to appeal, you or someone expressly representing you must testify orally or in writing before the close of the record. And in order to raise an issue on appeal, someone must have raised that issue before me. Given that we are holding an online hearing with some potential technical issues, I will, I'm going to hold the record open after the close of the hearing, in case someone has, wants to participate in the hearing and is unable to connect, um, so they can testify in writing. I'll hold it open for one week for new testimony and evidence from anyone. I will hold it open for a second week for response to whatever was submitted during the first week, and a third week for the applicant to submit a final argument. If nothing is submitted during the first week, the applicant can request that I close the record at the end of that first week. Or otherwise, I will hold it open for the second week for anyone to respond to whatever was submitted. And the applicant could submit their final argument and request for close the record at any point after that. Uh, you don't have to wait till the end of the third week. If anyone wants me to hold the record open or to continue this hearing for a longer period of, hold the record open for a longer period of time or continue this hearing, you must make that request before the close of the hearing today. As far as technical issues, as I noted, we've already muted everybody's microphone, will unmute uh, microphone individually as it's your opportunity to testify. Uh, we may unmute multiple microphones for the applicant's team if you have multiple persons that want to testify. Please only testify one at a time, so we don't get too much speaking over. When you begin to testify, please state your name and full mailing address. Please spell your last name, so I get it right, unless it's on the screen here, even so, spell, please spell it, so we don't have to track your, your. Track your name down out of the 17 people that are on my screen. In addition, I'll ask that everyone, also if you represent someone else, please say so when it's your opportunity to testify initially. In addition, when it, when you come back in, if you testify again in response to something, uh, please state your name again, so I know who's speaking, so I don't have to track down who is speaking in one of these 17 boxes on my screen. Um, when it's time for public testimony, like I noted, I will have Mr. Hornstein, I will ask the Gilberts if they want to testify. If anybody else logs in who's not the applicant or staff, I will see if they want to testify as well. And this is our first online hearing in the city of La Center. So we may discover some technical issues during this process, hopefully not, but if we do, we'll try and work through them. Oh, I, I forgot to say, I am, as a hearings officer, I can provide an unbiased decision maker, I think I did say that. But I do need to note that staff and the applicant and I held a practice hearing. We didn't discuss anything about this application, we just made sure we were all able to log on, we were able to hear, et cetera. As you noted earlier, we do have some connectivity issues, looks like everything has been worked out at this point, though. Um, but with that, that concludes my hearing, I've just given my introduction, I will open the hearing in the matter of case file 2020-009 CUP SPR SPL SP, SEPA, Mr. Spoon. I think I can unmute you. Okay. Good, that was Mr. Roden, sorry, wrong one. Mr. Spoon, you're a better metered self, great.
Good evening, everyone, this is Ethan Spoon, I'm the city of La Centers contract planner. And I'm just gonna have to ask your forgiveness in advance if there's any technical issues, like Mr. Turner said. I did lose internet service a couple times today while I was working, and so uh, if that happens, I will log on, um, log back on immediately and it typically takes about a minute or so to get back on, so just, uh, if that happens, apologize in advance.
Thanks for the warning.
I do want to introduce to you Emma Johnson, and Emma is my coworker, she's another planner at uh, WSP, and she helped me review this project and, and put the staff report together, and she'll be available for questions and, uh, to, to help me with questions. I also want to thank the applicant. Uh, and there's been quite a bit of coordination and back and forth with them. Um, and they've been, applicant team has been very responsive to the city's questions and, and requests. Um, so with that, I'm going to, I have a presentation to share. And Tony Cooper, the city's engineer, is also going to be helping uh, give the staff presentation. Um, so I am going to share my screen at this time, and I'm hoping that, uh. Sorry about that, hoping that, uh, you can see the presentation that is in front of me, can I just get a, a nod, head nod from everyone? Okay. Great. And can you also see the go-to meeting box showing up on the screen, is that mirroring onto the screen?
Hmm, I don't think so.
Okay, good.
I just see your PowerPoint.
Great.
Everybody's faces.
Trying to advance the slides here, hang on one second. So this is the project site, most people in La Center will know this as the existing Shell um, service station and convenience store. Um, it's about a four acre site located immediately adjacent to the freeway inter-, the I-5 freeway interchange at La Center Road. And, uh, it's, uh, look, it's bounded by La Center Road on the south and then also Paradise Park Road on the north and the east. Uh, the, uh, old Paradise Park Road is located here on uh, the west side of the site, that has since been vacated. Um, and the new Paradise Park Road, um, is located, as I said, on the north and east, and that was um, developed and, and put in place as part of the overall interchange improvements, which was the subject of an inter-local, an intergovernmental agreement between uh, the city of La Center and the Cowlets Tribe. Um, and it's also, the site is also the subject of a couple of development agreements. Uh, and so one of the most important things about this site uh, to know, at least from the city's perspective and, and how this project was reviewed, uh, is that the site is vested in a previous version of the city's code. Um, and, uh, under the development agreements, and that was the code that was in place in March of 2016. So what that means is that the city reviewed this project against, uh, those standards that were in place at, at that time, and so even though the current zoning for the site is the junction, uh, planned district zoning, um, uh, the site is vested under the previous commercial C2 zoning, uh, and all of the applicable city standards that were in place, um, at that time. So the timeline for the project, um, you can see a couple of these up here on the screen. Uh, dates back, as, as I mentioned, to 2016 and the development agreement, and then in the middle of last year, the applicant applied for a pre-application conference. Um, the application was submitted in the middle of March this year and then was deemed complete in later in March. Um, the notice of application was mailed and posted on April 10. Um, the SEPA, uh, MVNS, SEPA mitigated determination of non-signi-, significance was issued on, uh, May 6th with the comment period expiring on May 20th. Um, and then the public hearing notice was sent out on May 12th. So as I mentioned, um, the site is the subject of a couple of development agreements. Uh, there's one development agreement that is between the Cowlets Tribe and Minute Management, and then uh, more pertinently for this, uh, uh, for the city's review purposes, there's a development agreement that's in place between Minute Management and, and the city. And that development agreement primarily discusses, uh, transportation improvements. Paradise Park Road and the number of access points to it, uh, closing the existing La Center Road access when signal warrants at the new, uh, Paradise Park Road intersection are met. Um, vacating the existing Paradise Park Road to the west of the site. Um, and then vesting vehicle trips from the existing site, and so uh, the, the traffic number that was used for vesting purposes and for paying traffic impact fees is 199 PM peak trips, so that many trips are, um, are vested to, to the applicant from, from the existing development. I'm gonna switch gears just a tiny bit here and talk about the applicant's proposed development. Um, so there's four different uses that are proposed on the site. Um, the first one, building one is, is located in the southeast section, southeast corner of the site, which is the, uh, which is a convenience store of about 4,500 square feet. And then in the southwest side of the site, a, uh, 11,600 square foot multi-tenant commercial building. Uh, the, the tenants for that building have not been specified at this time, the applicant has, uh, is calling it general retail, and we'll talk a little bit more about that later in the presentation. And then, uh, on the northwest side of the site, a drive-through restaurant of about 2,800 square feet, and then finally in the northeast side of the site, a five-story hotel. Um, and there would also be 184 parking stalls associated with uh, the development, uh, landscaping, pedestrian improvements, and there's a couple of access points to the site, one from Northwest Paradise Park Road. Um, another from, uh, from, uh, to the north, excuse me, and then another one from, uh, Northwest Paradise Park Road, but to the east. Um, and there's also an ax-, access drive on the west here from, uh, Northwest Paradise Park Road. The applicant did submit, um, some renderings of the buildings on site, so I'm just gonna kind of run through those really quickly, this is the convenience store on the southeast side of the site. And this is the multi-tenant retail building on the southwest side of the site. You can see there's a common theme here in terms of the architecture of the buildings. And then on the northwest side of the site, this is the drive-through restaurant. And finally, the hotel. So, uh, there's a number of different approvals that are required as part of this, uh, project and, and in order for the applicant to accomplish the development. Um, in terms of land use approvals, there's a short plat, which is a short subdivision, site plan review, a conditional use permit, a tree removal permit, and then a SEPA threshold determination was issued in conjunction with these permits. And engineering review is also occurring in conjunction with these permits, so. At this point in time, um, I am going to turn it over to Tony Cooper, the city's engineer, and he's going to uh, run through a couple of engineering plan comments for you. Tony, can you hear us?
If you can, Mr. Cooper, we're not hearing you. Looks like you're, I'm assuming he's an admin, admin La Centers, all of those are muted. Do we need to unmute him?
Okay. Am I, can you hear me now?
Now we can.
Okay, Sarah, can you advance the slides to more to the picture, to the picture, uh, to the, to the plan, this utility plan? Um, there's one more slide. There you go, okay, I don't know if everybody can see that. So I, it's probably easier for me to just, um, talk about the, the site on this utility plan, and uh, so the first thing, as Ethan mentioned, um, the existing, uh, site was subject to a developers agreement between the city of La Center and Minute Management. Uh, the, the agreement include, included realignment of Paradise Park Road as built by the, by the Cowlets Tribe to accommodate the new roundabouts for the casino. Uh, Paradise Park Road was designed and built, um, per rural major collector standards, per, um, the engineering standards, which is appropriate for this type of, uh, uh, road with, um, access, so, uh, it, it was designed and built to accommodate all the future traffic in, in this area. As part of the realignment, there is two new access points, as Ethan mentioned, one on the uh, off, uh, Northwest Paradise Park Road on the, uh, east side of it. There's one access point, and then off, off of, uh, the north side, there's another access point, those, uh, those driveways were built to accommodate, um, emergency vehicles and trucks. Um, and they did a lot of turning movements to justify that, so they were built to accommodate all, uh, future traffic that would be generated for this site. Um, and, and as well as, there is a, um, driveway on Northwest La Center Road that, um, accesses the site to the south. That driveway right now is a right turn in, right turn out, um, access. Um, as part of the final site plan, they would eliminate that, but in the interim condition, that driveway would remain uh, as necessary to accommodate the construction aspects and, um, the, um, phasing that they might do, so. Um, it, it may, it may stay there for a while until, until it's, uh, warranted that they take that out to build the rest of the, uh, improvements on the site. And as Ethan mentioned, the, um, the agreement also vested a number of peak hour PM trips that, uh, that they would be, um, uh, able to use for their site, so they generated a, um, traffic report or traffic memo to um, determine that number of peak PM hour trips that would be generated for the site, and so that, they've actually, their, their, um, site, uh, their trips based on the site are actually less than their vested trips, so. Um, traffic impact fees theoretically won't be, won't be, um, charged to them because they were already vested. And in addition, um, they're need, they will need to comply with Clark Cup utilities for the water service, and I believe they are coordinating that, and and the Clark County Fire and Rescue for, uh, for emergency services, so they'll have to coordinate with them on the access to the site as well as the internal, um, configuration of of access. Um, as part of the sewer, the realignment of, uh, Center Road and Paradise Park Road, the Cowlets Tribe funded a sewer system and a pump station along La Center Road, and it connected to the city's wastewater treatment plant. Uh, this sewer system was sized for all of, uh, development, um, west of the Lewis River for the future buildout, and included, it included the, uh, Minute Management site. And as part of that sewer system, an eight-inch pipe was stubbed at the southwest corner of the site, and if you can see it there, but it's, um, it, it's the south, uh, excuse me, southeast corner of the site, and, um, to serve this development, so it's already prepped and they just need to connect in. Now, um, the Cowlets Tribe applied for a latecomers agreement for the city ordinance and for the installation of the sewer system or the pump station, and so anybody that connects into this, any development that connects to the sewer system has to pay a latecomers, um, latecomers fee, as well as the, um, the sewer impact fees for connecting into, uh, the city's wastewater treatment plant. And that's based on the number of RUs, and that'll be assessed when they apply for, uh, building permits. Um, also as part of that, uh, of the, uh, re-alignment of Paradise Park Road and reconfiguration of their site, um, they constructed an onsite underground sewer, um, stormwater system for detention and treatment per the city ordinance, so. Um, this underground detention system was sized and the, and the treatment system was sized to accommodate this future development. So as part of that, they need to connect into this, this new system that was built, and you can see it's at the northwest corner there. And all of the, all of the storm system from the downspouts and the catch basins will tie directly into the system. It outfalls to the, um, northwest there, and that's the general contours that, um, general slope of the land, so. They, they, um, submitted a, uh, stormwater report to justify that when they, when they, um, realigned the, the roads and built this, um, parking lot on the north side there. And that's per the city ordinance. Uh, the only thing that I could, that I wanna add that, uh, was not, um, installed were, um, a street light, city streetlights and, uh, street trees. Now, when this road's real, realigned, um, it was assumed that the, um, that the, uh, when it was, site was developed, any site is developed, that they'd have to install all those improvements, so. One of the things that will be required to do is install s-, streetlights and street trees along the length of Paradise Park Road, the north and, and the east. I think that's all I have, are there any questions or anything?
I don't have any questions, thank you, Mr. Cooper.
Thank you.
Um, the applicant, Ms. Roden, I guess, is gonna start us off?
Actually, I still have a little bit of, um, presentation to finish here. I'm trying to get it, a slide to advance. I apologize. There we go. So as I mentioned earlier, this is Ethan Spoo again, city's contract planner. As I mentioned, there's a number of different applications required to accomplish this development. And one of those is a short plat or a short subdivision application. And so the applicant has proposed to subdivide the site into four different lots, ranging in size from about 20,000 square feet on up to about 65,000 square feet. There's a minimum lot size in that vested C2 zone of 10,000 square feet. So those lots do meet the code in this case. The applicant, however, has indicated that they may or may not record and process that short plat application, proceed forward with it. And there's no particular requirement for them to do so. The existing site is one parcel, and so it could remain one parcel, and it would still meet the 10,000 square foot minimum lot size requirement. So condition number, condition of approval number 29 speaks to this. And it, it just says that if the applicant does proceed with a final short plat, they shall apply for and receive final short plat approval through the city and then provide a recorded copy once that's been recorded with Clark County. So there is also a site plan review type two application associated with this. And staff checked the applicant's development proposal against the, all of the applicable standards, including the C2 zoning standards, landscaping, parking standards, pedestrian connections and so forth, and found that it meets the code requirements. I'll talk a little bit more about some of those. There is a particular standard 18150030 that requires pedestrian pathways between building entrances and streets. Requires those to be 11 feet in width, which is eight feet of sidewalk and three feet of landscaping. And so there's a couple of those connections onsite that are less than eight feet wide. And this was discussed with the applicant during the, during the project review. And so there's a condition of approval that addresses that. Condition of approval number 25, which would require that those, that all pedestrian connections onsite leading from the streets to the building entrances be made eight feet wide and maintain a five-foot clear width to meet ADA standards. And that has to do with parking overhang, which I'll talk about here in a second. So in terms of the parking, the applicant is, is meeting the requirements for the different uses that are proposed on the site. There is 184 parking spaces proposed on the site, and the applicant's required to have 178. So they're a little bit over the minimum, but they are meeting the requirement. There's also two loading spaces required. And the applicant is providing those, one in back of the multi-tenant commercial building. And the applicant has also indicated that there's available space for one under the canopy of the hotel, in front of the hotel. And I mentioned that the applicant's proposing a two-foot parking, two-foot vehicle overhang on some of the parking spaces. So where those parking spaces, but pedestrian connections or landscaping vehicles would overhang by two feet into those areas. And that is one acceptable method of parking treatment that is allowed by the code. And the only stipulation really on that in the code is just that the, that the vehicles not damage the landscaping. And so condition number, condition of approval number 35 would limit the landscaping within that overhang area and require that it to be ground covered, that, that won't be interfere with or be damaged by the vehicles. There is a conditional use permit, and this is the highest level permit that we're, that the applicant is applying for. That's a type three, and the reason that this application is in front of the hearings examiner. So there's a number of different uses on the site that require conditional use permit. The hotel, the multi-tenant commercial building, the drive-through restaurant, and then the automobile fueling island. All of those require conditional use permit. Staff has reviewed the application against the conditional use permit criteria and have found that it meets, meets those. There is one issue in particular with regard to the conditional use permit that was discussed with the applicant. And that is the uses of, in, in the multi-tenant commercial building. And so you might remember that I said earlier that the uses in that building have not been specified at this time. The applicant has applied for those as a general retail use. And that is a use that's listed out in the code. However, it's not defined in the code what that is. And so in an attempt to bring a little bit more definition to what uses might be permitted in the multi-tenant commercial building as well as give the applicant some flexibility to change tenants in the future, staff has outlined and had discussions with applicant, outlined a condition of approval that would allow for any permitted uses in the C2 zone to locate in the multi-tenant commercial building as well as a number of conditional uses without the need to go back through site plan review or conditional use permit review. And condition of approval number 41, actually 38, 39, 40, and 41 addresses this particular issue. There's a wide range of uses that would be permitted there. And staff determined that those uses are consistent with the applicant's proposal and that they wouldn't generate any additional impacts, such as parking and, and trip impacts that, that are, are typical of a general retail use. So the stipulations on, on the future uses, however, are that they not exceed the vested number of trips, the 199 PM peak hour trips, that adequate parking be verified when tenants change, and that any uses with outdoor storage are subject to additional review. There is a critical area on the site in the form of a wellhead protection area. And wellhead protection areas are categorized as critical aquifer recharge area, area category one. And so the wellhead, the applicant plans to decommission the wellhead and deactivate the water system on the site. And then that would remove the critical aquifer recharge area from the site by the time of construction. And so there would no long, and this is outlined in conditions 42 and 43, there would no longer be a critical area on the site by the time of development. We did, staff did conduct a SEPA review, State Environmental Policy Act review. An MDNS mitigated determination of non-significance was issued, which just means that the proposal was assessed as not having significant environmental impacts that would require an environmental impact statement. And the mitigation that was specified in, in staff's review for the SEPA was that the application comply with all state and local regulations. And 42 and 43, which we already discussed, decommissioning the wellhead and deactivating the water system. Number 44, that the applicant coordinate with CCFR and Ecology for updates to the storage tank permits. There's existing storage tanks on the site now for the shell station. And the applicant plans to reuse those for the, the fueling island, island that they're proposing. And then number 45, that they comply with archaeological predetermination that they submitted, and that simply would require them to implement an inadvertent discovery plan in case there's any archaeological or cultural resources discovered on the site during, during construction. And then 46, which would require them to meet all recommendations in their submitted geotechnical report. So the SEPA comment period ended on May 20th. And we received comments from the Southwest Clean Air Agency, the Washington Department of Transportation, Washington Department of Ecology and AT&amp;T. And as a result of those comment letters, staff are proposing some new conditions. We discussed these with the applicant and we made, we made these, these discussions part of the public record. And so they've been available on the city's website for anyone to access and take a look at. And so I've listed out these conditions of approval here. The first couple deal were as a result of the Wash dot comment letters. And it requires, the first one requires that the applicant obtain an access break from Wash dot because Wash dot controls the Los Angeles Road, controls access to Los Angeles Road in proximity to the freeway. And so thinking back on the site plan again, there's a couple of pedestrian connections from buildings one and two on the south side of the site that enter the Los Angeles Road right away that the applicant's proposing. And so Wash dot indicated that they would need to approve an access break before those connections could be approved. So that's what's reflected in that first bullet there. And then in the second bullet, that pertains to the right-in, right-out access, existing access to the site that serves the, the Shell Station. And the applicant would like to keep that in place. And the development agreement anticipates that that, that be closed upon, when signal warrants are met at the Paradise Park Road intersection. So the applicant would like to keep that right-in, right-out in place until such time as that signal warrant is, is, is met. And then there's a couple of other conditions. Lighting in reference to proximity to the freeway and not causing glare for cars passing on I-5, complying with other requirements in the Department of Ecology's letter dated May 20, 2020. And then staff is recommending that condition of approval number 42 be revised to say that prior to engineering document approval by the city, the well located on this property must be decommissioned by a well driller license in the state of Washington. The well must also be decommissioned in accordance with the decommissioning standard set forth in the WACS. And decommissioning reports must be submitted to Ecology 30 days after the completion of decommissioning. And so that is language that was recommended to us by Ecology. And so we're wanting to swap that out for the language that's currently in condition number 42. And then finally, requiring the applicant to comply with all requirements in the letter from the Southwest Clean Air Agency dated May 20, 2020. So staff's recommendation then is to approve the application, the development, the, the short plat application, site plan review, conditional use permit, and tree removal permit, and SEPA, subject to the conditions in the staff report and the conditions that we just talked about. There is a clerical error that I just wanted to point out for you in reference to one of the conditions of approval. And this is condition of approval number 25, which references the width of the pedestrian connections onsite. And so I think I previously said that there's a condition of approval requiring the applicant upsize those to, to be eight feet. And so that does not, that condition of approval at the end of the staff report does not match what's in the body of the staff report. And so if you look at page 10 of the staff report, we propose that the language that's in the body of the staff report be carried through to the end of the staff report, the, the conditions of approval and require that those pedestrian connections be eight feet. So with that, that concludes my, my staff report. And be happy to answer any questions.
The only question I had was, you know, some new SEPA conditions, are those in the revised staff report that I got? Or do I need to add those in to that?
Those would be, those would need to be added in.
Okay. Can you provide me, during the open record, a word document with those modified conditions? So I can just copy and paste them in.
Certainly.
That'd be great. That was the only question I had. Mr. Odrin, I will. There we go. You unmute yourself. Great.
Great. Let's get this started. Trying to get my slideshow going here.
No problem. Once you do, can you go ahead and introduce yourself?
Yes, my name is Mike Odrin. I'm a land use planner and landscape architect with Olson Engineering, 222 East Evergreen Boulevard, Vancouver 98660. My last name is spelled O-D-R-E-N. I'd like to thank, first of all, staff for working very proactively with us throughout this design process and review process. I found that WSP, as well as the city of Los Angeles staff, were a very, great to work with. When issues came up and arose, they were very timely in bringing them to our attention so that they could be resolved fairly quickly, which I think has resulted in the applicant's general concurrence with the findings and conditions of approval as listed in the staff report and as amended here today. I will just make a few clarifying comments at the end of my presentation, which will largely follow what Mr. Spoo's presentation was, as well as some follow-ups and clarifications with some items that would be just for, for everybody else's benefit. Again, the proposal, 101 unit, five-story hotel located at the northeast corner of the site. A multi-tenant building. I'm just going to go through this fairly quickly. If anybody would like me to slow down. Mr. Examiner, you in particular, just let me know. A convenience store that will have a drive-through window, say for a coffee drive-up or something of that sort. Another drive-through restaurant in the northwest corner of the site. 12th Pump Automobile Fueling Island. The card lock that is currently present at what is called the Paradise Truck Stop. I believe that's still what, still what it's called. Will, will be taken out, although the pumps that were installed not too long ago, maybe within the last five or six years, should meet current standards, will be reused. The site was designed such that the new fueling island would be located in close proximity to the existing tanks. And again, the four-lock commercial short plat. As we're talking about the short plat, just want to bring up, as, as Mr. Spoo indicated, that the applicant does have, would have preliminary approval to, to do a land division. However, they would like the flexibility to, you know, they don't have to do that. And one thing is important here that may not have been raised is that the project has been, we've proposed to phase the project, meaning depending on tenant requirements, market conditions, myriad of different things, that this would allow for the site to be developed either as a whole or in stages or phases. Similarly, as, as. As things change or as the applicant may choose to sell off a portion or or lease a portion. Of the site that the short flat is also proposed to be potentially phased. Meaning that a one lot may be created with the remainder lot what's there or two lots. That we don't necessarily want to be tied into creating all four lots at one time. We do understand that there would be requirements for reporting cross access easements. With regards to parking pedestrians, things of that nature with any land division that would take place on site regardless of of ownership. Um, as I mentioned, the existing community store filling on will be removed however. In the interim, the applicant would like to keep the store and fueling islands open as long as possible. That the hotel, there's a potential for the hotel portion to to go first. There's a potential for the convenience store to go first, but we'd like the flexibility, which is one of the reasons why. The write in and write out is so important to be retained through. A a construction phase that would take place in the northern part of the site. As Mr. Spoo indicated before, it looks like we have the same exact picture. Just a bit of clarification here that this section, this section here. Is is was part of the vacated Paradise Park Road. It doesn't show up on Clark County GIS right now. But this is actually part of the property that will be developed. The road used to take a straight shot through here and land here. So that's just a little bit of a clarification. Moving through again, Mr. Spoo indicated that the current zoning is junction plan, but was vested and as well as the. Comprehensive plan designation as well as zoning is comprehensive plan, but was vested under the C two zone. A few pictures of the site. This is looking from the southwest to the. Fueling Islands and the and the convenience store. This is a view from the southeast looking northwest with Paradise Park Road over here. This is a very odd view from the northeast corner of the site looking southwest. And the northwest corner of the site looking southeast. We can see the existing road that that moves through there right now that that. Access will generally be maintained. Just to go through some of the plans, as you can see on the existing condition survey plan, everything that shaded out is existing asphalt. Not including, of course, Paradise Park Road. The site plan itself reversing all of the shaded area there is landscaping. With the internal circulation running generally north, south and east, west to the site, which I'll highlight more on the color site plan, but. Uh, this plan shows the pedestrian connections very clearly. Connecting all of the buildings and uses on site as well as to the rights of way. That connect also to the right of way along both both rights of way of Northwest Paradise Park Road. The landscape plan that, and this is one item that that a clarification. Mr. Cooper indicated that street trees were required along Paradise Park Road. We are showing a row of trees generally thirty feet on center around the entire. Along Paradise Park Road as well as along the center road. I just want to make sure that that the understanding is that if the street trees are there that they would need to be located either within the right of way or could be located on site. This is from more of a design aspect. That we would hope that that plan that's presented, the landscape plan that's presented. Meets the requirements for providing street trees. And so I I would request later on a response from Mr. Cooper that. Yes, in fact, we are meeting those standards with regards to those trees there. Utility plan that Mr. Cooper described showing that this is the location where the existing. Underground storm water detention facility is located that was built out and the site design has been such that we work around that and. Are able to connect everything in. So our plan is is meeting the condition that we. Connect up with the existing storm storm facility that was built as part of the redevelopment. In term redevelopment of the site when Paradise Park Road is built. Mr. Spoo again showed the some of the building elevation. So I'll quickly go through here. This would be the new convenience store elevation. The multi tenant retail building elevation. The drive through elevation. And the hotel elevations. As well as the perspective. A couple of items that I just wanted to clarify. I did talk about the short flat as far as an understanding that the short flat itself is going to be had the ability to be phased. One item with regards to the well and the condition requiring it to be decommissioned before engineering plan approval. I would like to suggest a. An interim and I don't know if it would be a condition or if it could be something that would be worked out with the city. The applicant's desire is to keep the existing convenience store and fueling islands open as long as possible. In order and the applicant understands that the well itself needs to be decommissioned. However, that well serves the existing store. So we're running into a little bit of a chicken and the egg situation here. Meaning that we would like to have the opportunity to run a. To run a a temporary water line, which would kind of wrap around the. The south side of the site and the west side of the site and connect into where the well is and connect into that water line so that. Water service may be provided to the existing C store, a convenience store while construction takes place on site. If we need to have the well decommissioned before final engineering plans are approved. For construction, then there might be a a lag in time. During which the store would not be provided information or water to to keep it open. So we'd like to have the opportunity and maybe Mr. Cooper can comment on this that we would like. To at least have the city review and approve if necessary and maybe it's a. Situation where a separate plan set is provided and and quickly reviewed and approved for that. Temporary water line to be connected into the well. That way there won't be a break in water service to the existing building during which time the. Final engineering plans are being. Um. Through Mr. Spoo's. Presentation, as mentioned before, we are in. We are in agreement, general agreement with the findings and conditions, even the ones presented tonight. We worked those out, I think, to everybody's satisfaction satisfaction earlier this week. The Mr. Examiner, just to clarify, that's condition number forty two that we would like to have clarification on with regards to. A new temporary. Waterline connection to that where the well will will be disconnected and connected up to that point there.
Okay.
Um. So to round out my presentation, as I mentioned before. And as we've presented, Mr. Spoo and I, city staff and the applicant's team are in agreement. That we meet the criteria for the approval, site plan approval, short platter approval, conditional use approval. Based on the application materials, the analysis, findings and conditions. And should be approved and that we are in general agreement with the staff report findings and conditions. As indicated in the staff report and as amended here this evening, I am now available for the questions.
Thank you, Ms. Odrin. I don't have any questions at this point. I'm going to go ahead and take testimony from everybody else and then we'll come back to the city staff response to to your questions. Mr. Hornstein, I guess you're next. And we'll need to unmute you. There we go. There you're unmuted, Mr. Mayan.
Can you hear me now?
Now we can. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Examiner. For the record, my name is Steve Hornestein, H O R E N S T E I N. Five hundred Broadway, Suite three seventy in Vancouver, although I have to admit to working from an undisclosed remote location for the last several. Thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. I'm here on behalf of the Calat Indian Tribe, the Calat Tribal Gaming Authority. And their resorting casino, A Lanay. And my client has asked me to speak in favor of this project. One might find that a little unusual because. Both parties have a gas station and both parties are going to have a hotel. But. We have had a long working relationship with minute management and its principals, Joe and Don. To work out a number of transportation improvements to make the interchange work over the last too many years now and. The development that is being proposed will complement what is occurring on the Calat tribe site. Carapox LaRose, the president and general manager of A Lanay has said, somebody else needs to build another hotel because. Ours at four hundred and fifty rooms will not be large enough. So we're getting another hotel. That's great news. It'd probably be up before the tribes, although that one will start in the fall, I'm told. I've taken a high a high level look at the staff report and the plans and although it's for you to decide, Mr. Examiner, it appears to me that. They've done an excellent job of meeting the requirements for the code on a relatively small site and a fairly complex projects at a buildings. And. Again, we're particularly pleased about the hotel itself. And we encourage you to approve this application and the developers to get going as soon as they can. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Hornstein. I appreciate it. I don't have any questions at this point. Mr. And Mrs. Gilbert, I'm going to unmute you. Do you have it? You're here. I want to make sure you have an opportunity to testify if you want to. Do you have anything you wanted to ask or say?
No, thank you. We're we're happy.
Okay, thank you. Um. I can't tell who all is here. There's a lot of initials. Does anybody else want to say anything about this application and you'll need to unmute yourself to do so? And I'm not seeing any kind of pausing to make sure everybody is able to actually do it. Okay, with that, we'll go back to the city. Mr. Cooper or Mr. Spoo. Mr. Cooper, the applicant had a couple of questions if you want to address those or Mr. Spoo, if you want to do that and any other response to the testimony.
Tony, go ahead. I think there was a question, Mike, if I, Mr. Odrin, if I have this right, there was a question on street trees and then there was a question on. The the wellhead. Do I have those two things right?
Yes, the the there was just a clarification to the examiner with regards to phasing of the short flat. Um, I should note one thing as long as we are talking together that. In one of your conditions with regards to the right in right out, you have the word exiting and I think you might mean existing.
I saw that.
Take a look at that. Um, yes, they with regards to street trees that we presented landscape plan that show trees all the way around the the property. Some are located within the right of way, some are located slightly outside of the right of way on site and that that. Those trees meet the street tree requirements. And then the second one was an allowance by the city to have to allow an interim. Public water connection to the existing convenience store, something that would wrap around the south and the west sides and then. Through the lands existing landscape areas to allow public water to be maintained. To the C store while the well is decommissioned. And then following that, then construction can commence on site.
Right. Ms. Odrin, just to make sure, you mentioned the phasing of the short plot. I understand what you're proposing. Are. Are there any changes needed to the conditions or does the conditions allow that?
No, the conditions don't expressly. Prohibit it. Clarified to the record.
Thank you. I I understand what the proposal is. Mr. Cooper, can you respond to Ms. Odrin's questions? And you'll lean down mute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me now?
There we go.
Okay, okay. So the answer to your question about street trees, yes, we allow street trees on private property or trees on private property to. To the to the standard, normally they're thirty feet on thirty feet spacing along. A proposed development. And so as long as you meet that, it 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 can be on the private property or the public right of way. That that is just the spacing that we're we're we want to see maintained. The second question is, and I I don't know that I can answer that is the 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 waterline connection, that's actually through Clark Public Utilities. So any any connection that you're going to do through the. Existing water line or the water line that is built there for your your site. Has to go through, has to be approved by Clark Public Utilities. Now, if you're doing anything with the well. I I believe that has to go through Clark County Environmental Health and I don't know about Department Ecology. So but but as far as the the service to particular buildings, you'll have to you'll have to get you'll have to get Clark Public Utilities approval for. How you want to how you want to phase that. I would say I would say also the fire department as well because you're you're going to have to comply with the fire department requires. Requirements for for fire suppression. So. Your site, I I don't know FTC hydrants, you know, you'll have to space those to to meet that or or. You know, as far as the fire suppression, you're going to have to meet Clark County. Fire rescue. So. Yeah.
Okay, just just to understand then that the a a temporary water line isn't something that would be then reviewed by the city, reviewed and approved by the city. That it would be to another agency and then wouldn't actually be necessary to discuss in this venue, correct?
No, no, it wouldn't, but we want to see that on the overall site plan as far as what you're doing, you know, with Clark County. Public utilities, but you have to get their approval for it.
Okay, very good.
Okay. And Ms. Odrin, any, well, now we did it if nobody else wants to say anything. So, Mr. Odrin, do you have anything you want to add at this point before we close the record for the hearing, right?
Um, I'd just like to give a bit of a shout out to the design team. I think that it's been. Wonderful team that's been put together with SGA Architecture and with Mr. Sweeney Architects of the site. Mr. Deuce as far as the hotel development and of course, Mr. Rose and Mr. Mr. Tanner, the developers. Mr. McMurray, as far as the civil side of things are concerned. We've we've had really good communication through this process. I think we've put together a first class project. That is evidenced by the fact that this land use hearing has only been going on for maybe an hour and ten minutes, if that, and. Everybody's done their their part. So I just want to give a big thank you to the to the design team. Thank you, Mr. Examiner, for hearing this tonight and I do not have anything further.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'm going to close the hearing. I will hold the record open as I indicated. Today, I'll hold it open for one week until June second for anyone to submit any additional written testimony and evidence. I'll hold it open for second week until June ninth for anyone to respond to whatever was submitted during the first week. And for a third week until June sixteenth for the applicant alone to submit a final written argument without any new evidence. As I noted, if nothing new is submitted during the first week, the applicant can ask me to close the record and I will do so. At that point and I go ahead and issue my decision. If anything new is submitted during the first week by June second, I'll hold it open until June ninth. And then the applicant can submit a final argument at any point after that and ask me to close the record now, issue the decision. But I will, I'll close the record at the latest by June sixteenth. I will try and get my decision out by the latest June thirtieth or two weeks from whenever the record ends up closing. Anything anybody wants to submit should be directed to the city at the email address in the listed in the notice. I believe that's Mr. Spoo's address, is that correct? Or is there a generic city email?
I think that is Sarah Dollar's address.
Okay, whatever the email is in the public notice that the city sent out is where you, anyone would send any written testimony and evidence. Mr. Spoo, does anything that's submitted have to be received by five o'clock? Or is there a different closing time for the city for submittals?
Yes, five o'clock.
Okay, so anything that is submitted that anyone wants to submit by the city has to be physically received by five o'clock on the relevant date. But unless there's any questions, you'll have to unmute yourself if you have any. I'm seeing a lot of head shaking, but not everybody's on here and nobody's unmuting. So with that, that concludes our hearing. Thank you all for participating via video and best of health to all of you. I hope everyone's not going too stir crazy with the lockdown, but hopefully the next one will be in person. Thank you all, and that concludes our hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.